I think we'll do the pledge first and then we'll do the public hearings. We'll kind of meld it all together. Our show is seven o'clock. If you'd like to start, so if you'd all please rise and pledge to the flag with us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just. Welcome, everybody. June 9th meeting, 2014. Vote right up the bill's board. We'll have a few absences here tonight. Jen is traveling and as you know Jay was wounded about six weeks ago. I think today was his first day of physical therapy. He could either be running a little late or he could be more impacted by the use of the limb at the therapy session, so he might show up late. What we've got, we'll call the meeting to order, but we have a few public hearings tonight. I thought we'd do those first and then we'll move into our department committee reports and our regular business. The first one on the public hearing list there is zoning code. So our section 216B-2B, if you're at the last meetings, what this was is our current zoning code needs updating and we've done some, but other parts still need modernization. We came across one section where it doesn't really properly take into account the impact of seeker and timelines and so forth, so we're correcting that. We talked about it and then we had our zoning council look at it to get that section updated. So what we do is I'll have the clerk read the revised proposed section.
No, no.
Pardon me?
This one.
And then we can talk about it on the board and from the public too. But if you pay attention, it is really just modernizing things. It has to do with timelines, so.
This is legislative intent. The zoning law requires disposition of a site plan application within 60 days. This time limitation is unrealistic in the light of planning board's obligations under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, better known as seeker. This law amends the zoning law to require disposition of an application within 62 days of the close of the public hearing or if no public hearing is held within 62 days of the completion of seeker. This language is consistent with the New York State Village Law 7-725-A. Section two, section 200-16B-2B of the Code of the Village Juridic is hereby amended by deleting the existing language and replacing it with the following new subsection. Public hearing and decision on the site plan. The planning board may, in its discretion, hold a public hearing or an application within 62 days if it has deemed the application complete. An application for a site plan approval shall not be deemed complete until the lead agency has adopted a finding of no significant adverse environmental impact, negative declaration, or until a DEIS.
DEIS.
DEIS, okay, whatever that means, has been accepted by the lead agency as satisfactory with respect to scope, content, and adequacy. If a public hearing is held, the planning board shall mail notice of said hearings to the applicant and adjoining property owners at least 10 days prior to such hearing and shall publish notice of said hearing in a newspaper of general circulation in the village at least five days prior to the date thereof. If a DEIS is not required, a decision shall be made on the application within 62 days of the close of the public hearing or if no public hearing is held within 62 days after the application is deemed complete. If a DEIS is required, a decision shall be made on the application within 62 days of the adoption of the seeker findings statement by the lead agency. The time within which the planning board must render its decision may be extended by mutual consent of the applicant and the board. The decision shall be filed in the office with the village clerk within five business days after the decision is rendered and a copy mailed to the applicant. Three, servability. The invalidity of the word, section clause, paragraph, sentence, part, or provision of this law shall not affect the validity of any part of this local law which can be given effect within such part or parts. Effective date, this local law shall take effect immediately upon the filing of the New York State Secretary of State in accordance with section 27 of the Municipal Home Rule.
So DEIS means draft environmental impact statement. Seeker is State Environmental Quality Review Act, just so everyone knows.
Yeah, like we said, it's a technical modernization, really. The current law gave them 60 days and didn't reference seeker. It's not meant to delay an applicant or confuse anybody. It's just getting it consistent with what's demanded now.
You want to point out the reading of the old law just so we have the comparison?
Sure, if you'd like. You feel good reading it?
Yeah, this is the old one that this new one will be replacing. It says, "Disposition of application by planning board within 60 days of receipt of the application and after the applicant has had the opportunity of meeting with the planning board, the planning board shall approve, approve with modifications or disapprove the site plan. The decision of the planning board shall be expressed in the report to the code enforcement officer, which report shall be binding. A copy of said report shall be mailed to the applicant at the address indicated on the application." So this basically says that the planning board has to render a decision within 60 days after the application has been submitted to the CEO. So this new provision gives 62 days. That also takes into account both seeker and the planning board approval, so there's more room for an adequate review of the documents for the planning board.
And if you're wondering why 62 versus 60, in our brilliant mathematical minds, we figured they meet every four weeks, really, and sometimes that could be more than 60 days. It could be a 31-day month and then a 30-day month, or so you could get a sequence where something happens, so 62 seems to pull those variations into. But, like I said, it's technical and if anybody had any comment, the public hearing is for public comment, but it's kind of a minute little argument. There's no comment?
Is the definition of DEIS going to be in this?
Do you have it in?
It's a pretty standard definition, but DEIS, there's a generic environmental impact And that's part of seeker, so the definition I would imagine would be in the seeker forms.
I think we'd just make it better if it was defined.
Quite frankly, I don't have the words of a definition in my repertoire. Is there anything you know of and we could pull it from and add it as an addendum?
Not right off the top of my head.
Here, there, just say, at the first mention of DEIS, just say draft environmental impact statement. Quote, DEIS, in there.
Yeah. Because in the beginning, they say, let's see, where did they first talk about seeker? Up in the legislative intent, where it talks about the time limitation is unrealistic. It says obligations, in the first statement, they do state State Environmental Quality Review Act. We could put a parentheses after that seeker, you know, the acronym seeker. And then in your, in the main paragraph where it says DEIS, I'd say we do the same thing. We just type out the word draft environmental impact statement and then put it in parentheses.
That way people just don't need to refer to another document for the.
Yeah. Draft, environmental, impact. I think what it is, our lawyer works on this every day, but that's a good point. I think we could just clarify the wording of it. What we do is we close this public hearing and then later on in the meeting we'll vote on this. Is there a motion to close the public hearing on local law? What's the local number? Do you have a number for that one?
I do not.
Okay. Would you be able to get this one?
This minute?
Yeah, we'll send you out of mission. As you book in your office?
I think we'll just.
Pardon me?
It's the last one we did?
Yeah, I can't remember. I think we did a four.
I think it's a five.
Yeah.
I forget now. Okay.
Three. So I'd say now we make the motion that we close the public hearing on local law number three, which is redefining the timelines for section 216B-2B. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
So we'll work on that later. And then we have a second public hearing, which I'll, to do with clarifying our winter no parking rules. Is there a motion to open that public hearing? Second? All favor? What we came up with here was we have two-hour parking and then we have in the winter no parking after 11:00 p.m. on our village streets. Unfortunately, many of our businesses need to be open after 11:00 and it's a little bit of an imposition to ask them to move customers' cars at 11:00, so we're trying to find a way to strike a balance here. And this one, I don't know that will resolve tonight because in section B, I've had some more thoughts about it, but what we're trying to do, we'll have the clerk read it in a moment, but like I said, in the winter, the existing law was intended to allow capability of our plowels to plow our streets unimpeded after 11:00 p.m. The problem becomes a lot of the merchants around the village, excuse me, on the state highways, which were in the village, and the current law talks about any street within the village, and so we're trying to find a way to let the state highways be used later at night. We're going with, maybe I'll let you read this and you could just read A and B here for us.
Local law.
Just start with A right here and B.
All right. No A is no vehicle shall be parked on any village-owned street or village right of way within corporate limits of the village juridic between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. during the period beginning November 1st and ending March 31st of the year, both dates inclusive. On the New York State highways, Route 9 and 199, there should be no parking from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. during the same period. B, when snow and/or ice clearing operations are underway, any vehicle that is parked on, parked, or abandoned on any street in violation of the subsection A may be removed by or under the direction of the police department of the village juridic or any responding police agency. This amendment shall take effect immediately upon the filing of the Secretary of State in accordance with section 27 of the Municipal Home Rule.
So on the section eight piece, you can hear the wording, we're trying to excerpt out of State highways, Route 9 and 199. We did talk with our highway foreman and they do feel it should be some of the parking there sometime in the night just so the state can clear properly. Part B is where I had a thought, we might want to just, we don't have to vote on this one tonight, but if we could pick some wording in B. This is, "When snow and ice clearing operations are underway, any vehicle that is parked or abandoned on any street in violation of A may be removed by or in the direction of the police department or any responding police agency." I think we should put in there, it's unwritten, but when we tow, the vehicle owner is responsible for the towing charge. This is a little unclear. It's vague. It almost sounds like we'd be the ones paying for it. So I think what I recommend here is that we continue this public hearing into the next meeting and then work on some wording there as far as how it looks. So you looking at one print? So what he's looking at, what we generally do is we put out the bid to a tow company and I think we only tow one or two cars a year, if that, which is good. But I think we should just have the law reflect who's going to pay for it.
So there is a provision currently in.
This is a section C?
In C, this states, "The police department upon removing a vehicle in violation of the section shall notify the registered owner of the vehicle. The removal and impoundment and the registered owner therefore shall be allowed to recover it from the place where it has been placed or impounded upon presentation to the police department of evidence of their identity and right to possession of the vehicle. C, force return and in addition to an administrative fee to secure the removal of said vehicle. Any penalties and fines owing to the village of Red Hook. They shall also pay all towing service and storage charges incurred for the removal of the vehicle in violation of this chapter."
Is that, what section is that?
190-28.
Yeah, but letterwise?
C.
C? All right, so I would say C sounds like it's doing what we want, but this version just had A and B here, so I think we'd have to continue the public hearing anyway and then add C.
Well, we're not changing C, right? So we keep C. The only two lines that we're changing, basically A and B, and the part we're changing in B would be you're adding any or any responding police agency.
Yeah.
So C remains as is unless we make an amendment to delete it, right?
Could you read the first sentence of C to me again?
"The police department upon removing a vehicle in violation of this section shall notify the registered owner of the vehicle of the removal and impoundment, and the registered owner therefore shall be allowed to recover it from the place where it has been placed or impounded upon presentation to the police department." This is one big step. It's basically, well, C. Can you read it again?
That's good. Let's look at A again together with everybody here. Do we think it clarifies what we're trying to do there? As far as any thoughts? And then B, the reason I worked on changing B is that after a certain time of night, there would be no village or Red Hook PD on duty, so the responding agency would be a non-Red Hook PD agency. So we're trying to pick that change up there.
And you also added, I guess this will be a question from me, "When snow and/or ice cleaning operations are underway, any vehicle," so if it is not snowing or if there's no clearing operation underway, would it be legal to park?
Well, maybe in violation of A, we would only tow under B if it's snowing or, meaning if we're clearing snow or ice.
So you'd still get a ticket if you're parked there, but you wouldn't be towed unless there's snow removal or ice removal operation underway?
Yeah. That's the intention there. Well, it sounds like C is worded broadly enough to incorporate those changes in A and B.
It talks about all fees associated with towing and storage, even administrative fee to secure. So if there's a responding police agency other than the village of Red Hook that requires additional administrative work, then.
Okay. Yeah, looking above at the bolded text there, we already say delete existing 190-28A and B and insert A and B, so C would sit. So I'm okay with it. All right, is there a motion? Any comment from the public, or?
Do you usually post anything when you're going to do the cleanup?
Yeah, but this is not the four-corner cleanup. This is general winter storm.
Yeah, I mean, but when you're talking about the state roads.
Yeah.
I understand, like, on the village roads, there's no parking at night. And that could be, that's there. But on the state roads, which is the problem you're having, is like if it's a, if it's posted, then it activates the tow situation. Because you only do it, you do it one day, pretty much, and you usually put something out, I think, on most of the time. You don't use snowbird to see, because that could be during the daytime, too.
I didn't follow your question to that, but if we're doing the four-corner clearing, yeah, we stick those temporary, no parking.
Right, and in words, if it's posted, that there's cleanup going on, then it would be a towable situation on state roads.
What also involves, I think, if I were to read this, during a winter storm, but we're not cleaning up, you know, removing the snow, then this provision would kick in as well, so if it inhibits or restricts the clearing of snow during a snowstorm and DOT come fly off and then when they're clearing it, that that provision would be part of that, too, so that, again, those cars in the way of applying activity during the snowstorm, that would be part of that. So the four corners, I think, when we clean that, we do close the roads and we try to notify people.
Yeah, I'm saying if you posted it though, then you can reflect it in your code there that if it's posted, that activates the towing situation on state roads and posted village-owned roads. The village roads that are maintained by the village, that's not going to be one of those.
You're just trying to help us, you're just trying to help us with the four-corner clearing?
Right.
Yeah, but you're okay with the other part, like you're just adding on those concepts? Yeah. Yeah, I think that's flexible enough.
Just designate the difference between a village-owned retained street and a state street. Just think you may have a problem if you tow a ticket on a state street, that doesn't mean that you're fishing on them.
Yeah, when they put that temporary no parking sign by order, I think by order of Red Hook PD or something, I think quite frankly, we're not really looking to tow anybody, we're just looking to get them out of the way, so they generally do that when there's moss or snow pile, you know, it's.
It's usually done in the evenings, too.
Yeah.
And we usually try to give as much time as possible. I mean, it takes, sometimes we try to get it done as quickly as possible and, you know, we usually have five to six different subcontractors involved, so, you know, I think we usually try to give like around at least 48-hour notice when we post the sign, so it gives everyone fair warning.
I think George is trying to just help us on some definition there.
That's a good thought.
I think so. Anybody else? What I recommend is we'll close this public hearing, too, and vote on it later tonight. Is there a motion to close it?
So you don't want to keep voting?
No, we'll close it. Is there a second?
There's a second.
All favor? Aye. The third item, maybe we'll chat from here a minute. Technically, it's not a formal public hearing, we put it under this, but what we're, want to get some awareness out there is, as some of you know that come to meetings routinely, the village is trying to buy a municipal parking lot from Key Bank and we're going back and forth and then we're talking with our engineers and one of our big claims to fame here in the village of Red Hook is trying to find other people's money. It's another acronym for everybody's CFA, it's the Consolidated Funding Application, it's the way the state of New York now disperses grant money. What we're looking to do is, if we can interlock this properly, we have some leads on some financing to buy the parking lot. It's not a dumb deal and a few things have to happen, but at the same time, we would like to make improvements in the parking lot, possibly headed toward doing a little more premier pavement things, more, better drainage, a little better landscaping, and then my idea, too, is, I don't know if this would be, this CFA is, on the front kiosk area, have more of a bus stop, semi-permanent celebrations area along that front there to give a little thing where we could do a music show or something on the weekend in the farmer's market and things, we would have to put up a little tent. A lot of people liked it when we had last year, that temporary gazebo for the winter market celebration, something, but it's, but most of the money is off on the drainage side. If you look, sometimes when we have celebrations out here, there's a couple of rolls in the pavement where I get out there with a broom and try to make the pond go away. So the engineers are putting something together. But again, when I use that interlocking or they're connected, we have to get ownership first, but part of the application in the case that we should have some seeker designation, in other words, there's that word again, so we're discussing it a couple times today. It's hard to file seeker if we don't own it yet, but we'd like to set the stage to apply for the grant, so a few things have to happen. So I don't want to mislead the public that we own it and we got this thing going, but if it all falls into place, it could be good. We get ownership and then we could throw some of this money into developing more what we want there. So just really for discussion, I don't know, our engineering firm, the CT male, one of their reps is in the off, in the front here, did you have any you want to add on that? Or?
I don't think.
Sure.
Just to add a few details to what Ed was saying there, the application is due a week from today, Monday, and it's the 16th. And we've been working on it, kind of scoping it out, and, you know, we have information on the soils from crack pass work, we have a survey from pass work that we've done with the village, so that all goes into the, put together feasibility study that goes with the application. Because the application is for the green innovative grant program, so we have to, you know, we have to incorporate those green infrastructure into the, into the parking lot redesign and improve drainage improvements, and so we have to make sure that they're feasible. Some of the things that we would be considering would be porous pavement, there's different variations of that, but there's porous asphalt and there's pavers. And then bio swales, fire retention would be the other alternative, or it'd be a combination thereof. So that would allow us to basically redo the parking lot, you know, down to, down to the sand, build it back up, create it properly, stripe it, drainage, landscape, the whole nine yards. So we're going to go, you know, there's some features around it, like you were saying, the celebration area, we can incorporate that, that would be good, too. The grant is a 10% match on the village side. And, you know, we have some pretty wide ranges of potential costs because the scope of work isn't really defined yet, but, you know, just full reconstruction and redo the pavement and all that. We're looking at, right now, our max cost is around $400,000. Like I said, that's a pretty loosely based number because we haven't defined the scope of work tightly. And if the grant is awarded, you would find out in late fall, you would actually have a contract early part of next year. So it's kind of the timing for this.
Yeah, the timing works out pretty well because we expect to hear in the early fall on what we're conjuring up on the purchase side. We've been talking to Key Bank for a couple of years now, just saying, hey, look, we want to buy it, and they've been holding it in reserve status for us, but in 2% tax cap world and in, you know, just general financials, it's a little tough to justify throwing all that money, but this one option might get us in there on the ownership side and then we can upgrade it a little bit. And either, and one, if we don't get the CFA, these, they're like taking lottery tickets, essentially, you know, you put your case together, but you don't necessarily win it. We would still own it and live with what we got, but it'd be nice if we could get it and make it a lot nicer than it is.
And some of the maximum obligations we have talked about, too, is, you know, we can leverage other grants that are available. We've been pretty successful with getting a major grant and then leveraging a couple smaller grants simultaneously that would help us with our obligation, so, you know, we're trying very hard to minimize our costs coming directly from taxpayer dollars, local taxpayer dollars, and use, use the funds that are available for these specific purposes to, to get more bank from the book, actually, for our village residents. That's a plan that we've done successfully in the past on other grants, which we'll try again.
As part of this, and I don't know, first I've heard of, but as part of this, we're also looking at charging stations and bicycle racks?
We could. Yeah, it's consistent with our zoning code and then we do have bicycle racks now and...
I mean, if we're going to ask businesses to do it.
Yeah.
Walk or talk.
We would definitely, that would be in the plan.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, the big thing, too, is, what I was going to say is with the, current lot is hugely more in demand. Ever since the newest restaurant opened up, it's amazing. When you said charging stations, the reason I paused was, we had some internal talk with the new modern parking station kiosks where you can charge for parking. I thought that's where you were headed, but we haven't thought about that in any more depth or detail, so, and quite frankly, it's not actively being discussed, but we're, with the new high-tech systems, it seemed like it might be an option, but, and then it also begs... But and then it also begs the question going forward, the parking lot definitely helps the businesses. And but if we get all this through grants and the mechanism we have designed, it's not going to be directly coming out of, like grants to the Red Hook taxpayers' pocket. So it makes it more amenable to be to not charge for parking. Whereas if we were paying it as taxpayers and then the business were getting the main benefit, it might be something where you'd need another mechanism to help pay for it. But this looks like it's staying neutral right now. Okay. Like I said, that part is not really a public hearing. We would just like to be able to have the engineer in the application. Robert, you said, we'd like you to be able to state that we would act as lead agency if and when step A happens. Back to the sequel, which I mentioned earlier in the discussion. We as the village would be the party that would be lead agency by definition. It's within the village, it's something we would be owning. We didn't think we needed an actual resolution or anything, but can you just state that in your, if things fall into place, village rhetoric would be?
The lead agency.
Does that work for you?
That works.
Okay, so we don't need any vote there. Mainly the reason is, we don't own it yet, so we can't really say we're going to be lead agency till we own it. Then we can, he can state that that would be what we do. Yes?
Does this include the lot, the whole lot that we, what they were talking about, had to be together?
No, it doesn't right now, no.
And you have a question, you know, on the other grant we're applying for, the Department of State grant. Does that require?
Well, we had just, and I had a discussion about that earlier. That turned out to be a little bit of a dead end. So at this point, I would recommend it to Ed, not, and then we're not going to move forward with that.
So, question here.
Yeah, so do you think you will buy the lot, but when, by fall? Or are you still negotiating? Is that?
We're negotiating, and the big thing is where do we get the money? And so it's, so the numbers are coming, yeah, the numbers aren't really too much of an issue right now. It's just the money.
So the grant, this grant here, the CFA, what is it?
The CFA.
You pass for the $400,000, or is there a certain number associated with the grant? Is there a maximum amount?
The grant doesn't, does have a maximum amount, but it's way beyond $400,000.
Oh.
I forget the exact number, but basically they have roughly $20 million to divvy up into the projects. And the way they typically do it is they, the projects, if you look at the last, previous year's awards, they've all been in the under a million dollars, except for maybe one kind of stellar project. They're all in that range. So the $400,000 is actually in the low end of the awards. But there's, this program doesn't have a fix where it's either this amount or that amount. They try to divide it based on the number of projects that get awarded every year.
Do you ask for $400,000, is that, or whatever?
That's what we're proposing.
I think Park College received the same grant last year for close to three-quarter of a million dollars for a similar project.
That's the permeable block? So do you have a number on how much the lot's going to cost to buy?
Me, for you?
Yeah.
But I can't, that's subject to executive session and that's, by law, it's protected.
But you let us know.
Pardon me? Yeah, yeah. But anyway. So like I said, that was more for open discussion, not public hearing. We balked it in the public hearing caption there. With that being said, we'll move to our more normal business. Well, it wasn't really, that was just discussion, yeah. We would go, let's see, back to the normal process here. So clerk's minutes, last month in May, we only had one meeting. We worked so hard, I think for February, March, and April, that we gave ourselves a week off in May. But we did have minutes to review. I went through them and I asked the board, are there any additions, alterations, or corrections? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented? Is there a second? Second. All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And let's see, we've got Village Treasurers Report. So I guess these are the 9th of June 2014, so not end of May, this is.
I gave you both.
Oh, yes.
Reports are there and the balances for both are there.
Oh, okay. Let me look at it to get familiar.
Just for the four main.
So the bold it is the month and, okay, I got you, okay.
Okay. We just completed our 2013-14 budget year, May 31st. And I'd like to commend the board for paying so much attention to the budget. We're in the budget, we have a fund balance, even with that bad winter, we did pretty good.
You can all clap.
Did very well. The general fund balance as of today, $84,666.96. General fund balance, May 31st, $6,661.32. Water fund balance as of June 9th, $35,814.98. As of May 31st, $35,267.87. Trust and Agency is always the same, it's $15,141.13. Materials Management, as of today, $1,693.61. May 31st, $2,551.45. Paid cash, $42.46. Village Green, $3,260.41. Hardscrabble, $2,742.13. Health Insurance, $1,883.14. Capital Projects, $356.67. Monthly Expenses, General Fund, $116,852.46. Water Fund, $27,531.91. Trust and Agency, $15,141.13. The Materials Management, $5,817.22.
What is garbage, what is Materials Management buys? They spent a lot of money, you know. Two months left?
I think it was two months of resource recovery. And everything's paid up to the year's end.
So just a bonus for us to consider. We still have an outstanding revenue coming out of $41,000 per chip. So that'll be added to our fund balance that we currently just finished up.
There's even more than that money that's come in, that has been earmarked for the AUD. So the AUD is going to show much, much higher fund balance than this. This is just the dollars and cents balances.
Do we have a bit more revenues?
We'll be sensitive this time of year.
We're talking, AUD is an acronym for the Annual Update Data, I think is the last word. Essentially, it's an accountant's review of the books. And one good thing the village did last year, we moved to CPA level firms, both for our AUD and the A133 audit we did. So the numbers get reviewed, the treasurer's numbers get reviewed by a CPA firm. And what they're getting out of the chips money is we get money from the state for certain highway improvements we do, long-term highway improvements. And that hasn't come into us yet, so it's, it's not showing in our, that's six thousand mile balance for the year end. But the accountants will do the mystery bookwork to bring it back to the correct fiscal year when they check them in. Overall, that's good news.
Yep, good year.
We all worked hard and it's good stuff, even given the fact that it was a pretty wicked winter. Spent a lot more there. Anyway, is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report? So, is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see, police report, but I think I see Patrick in the back there. You want to step up and talk, Patrick?
For the month of May 2014, the police report, incidents handled 226. UTTs from traffic tickets are 166, and arrests 25. We also did, we had a couple of things going on in this past month. We did a bike rodeo over at the Red Hook High School. Jen Norris, trustee Norris was involved in that, her brother. We had a couple of local businesses volunteer their time, which is Kinks and Cyclade down the way. So a lot of local youth showed up. We gave out and resized kids for bicycle helmets. So if it was a little bit old or a little too tired or a little bit big, we gave them brand-new helmets. That all comes through donations through County Stop DWI, through Bill Johnson. Also this year, there, actually this past two, two or three weeks, we worked with the forensics class in the high school. We did a, one of my officers is a full-time fireman, and we do the fire investigation class for forensics. We also did, one of my other officers, Officer Wagner, we did a crash investigation class for forensics as well. So it went really well, we got a bunch of thank you cards from the school. Can I visit him now?
Thank you.
And there is one question I got to ask. Do you have anybody on a retainer for a lot, let's say detective?
On a retainer?
Yeah.
No, per DM.
Okay. A DM, what's the need for? A lot of, there are a lot of things that go on, a lot of cases that we handle.
Hey, Patrick, Patrick, for both of you, it's kind of an open question. I would ask, can you, we're not in public comment right now, but can you ask a more specific question? What's the need for? It's very broad.
Well, I mean, what I had asked you last month was about inviting the insurance department up here for, to give their review of what they could possibly do for us and everything else, to cut the cost, to cut the cost. And then the availability, you've got somebody that you're hiring and that, they'll already give us all of this. This all comes with the package.
Why don't you hold that for the public comment? And I think, Patrick, I didn't want to get into too big a discussion, but.
Oh, I can ask that in public comment.
But one thing you said, per DM, the detective is a part-time officer who gets paid when he works. So it's not, it's, it's within the parameters of our budget, there's no.
That's a low salary.
Yeah, it's not a, the phrasing that was starting to be bandied about was like it was some high-cost thing. It's not, it's.
Well, I'm wondering is, where is this all leading to with that, you know? In the department, the next thing would be something else, something else if you wanted to move a vehicle.
Well, I think, why don't we call it a public comment? I don't know if you want to stick around a little.
Yeah, no, I would, I would exactly answer.
I think, Don, just what's most important, when you say what's it leading to? This budget was held this year and that includes police, highway, admin, everybody. So it's, you know, what we planned for happened and that's good, so.
Okay, public comment.
Let's see. Like we said, Mr. Trapp's not here, but his report was prepared for him by staff in the zoning department. I just have to find it, let's see.
I don't have it.
I have it. I have one. I have one. Oh.
She didn't get them.
Okay, well, I think my primary concern is the money. Looking at it, let's see, what they're talking about, it's like they're, it's going to be verbal. And let's just see, the numbers look pretty good. It says, month of May 2014, the bottom line on two-page sections, $8,146 in revenue in the planning department. A lot of that is the reactivation of the Noah Commons. They apply, apply case by case for each new building they build. So it's, a new one was permitted, there's a big fee for that. And then, then Noah Commons, as part of their project, they pay our water tapping fee. So some significant money there. Then page two has $550, so we had, what, $8,100? So we get about $8,600, $8,700 in the planning department. And we are seeing that, in our belief, you know, village life is in demand. And we do see some subdivision and more construction and good things going on. And that revenue is showing, it's, it's good stuff. That'd be Trapp. Trustee Norris is traveling, like we said. She submitted the materials management report and her celebrations report. I just have to look across at it and find the month we're in here. Let's see, 2014, May. Looks like we moved 12.62 tons of household waste, which is the pure garbage. And single-stream recycling was 5.53 tons. We sold just a touch under $2,500 in tags. And then on the cost side, $1,299 for tipping fees at Ulster Resource Recovery. There's a fuel surcharge, they break out there, $97. Total cost, just under $1,400, and the total revenue was $2,457. Like we say, each month, we would love it if everybody came back to our garbage and recycling program. Some people in the audience from the town, CAC, so we're moving. If you look, we averaged 10.8 tons per month this year in household waste, 6.1 tons of single stream. So we're 60% recycling, which is huge. I think people would die for that number. And the prior year, let's see if I can find that, it looks like we did 11.5 tons of garbage and 7.1 tons of single stream. And single stream, like you know, is cardboard, newspaper, plastic, tin, any kind of metal cans, glass. So that's amazing to me. And we still do get complaints about noisy. I got, last Thursday, private haulers coming around early in the morning and making a lot of noise way before we make noise. And they have bigger trucks, all mechanized, and they just tear up the streets heavy and they're making a lot of noise. So if you can switch back to us, come back to the Red Hook tag program. On the celebration side, we've had our first two farmer's markets. They've been really good, just flipping around here. Maybe we'll let Brent talk about, do you have her report there, Brent? You want to talk about the library and? Yeah. We have another sculpture show coming up that's going onto the streets, June 10th. It's working with Red Hook Community Arts Network in the village. We got that set up and then there'll be different sizes, whether 16, 15 or 16 sculptures this year. And they look pretty good. Let's see, what else here, Brent? So will you pick up the other things that are on this when you go?
No, I'm going to read them.
You'll do Denver, right?
I'll do Denver.
Okay. Jen recaps Apple Blossom Day. I guess this is from the library's report there. I think everybody knows this, right? The children's learning garden had its grand opening. It was a great big crowd and it was a good time at the library. And so, they have here, the garden is gorgeous and has been in heavy use since the opening, so. As far as upcoming events from the village side, we want to have our third annual community concert in Potluck. This is with music by Grass-fed Bluegrass, that's Band Bud's local bluegrass band. It's set for Saturday, August 2nd, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at Avens Park. Then Jen uses the words, "we are plotting Hardscrabble Day." Sounds a little nefarious there, but planning, plotting, whatever. Saturday, September 20th, still looking for vendors. We do have a website, hardscrabbleday.org, and people are sending checks already, I think, to the vendors. And then she talks about the materials management. Let's see, Steve, you want to go on the water next?
Sure. The water report for the month of May, during, we used 7,336,000 gallons of water for a daily average of 236,000 gallons. In May of 2013, saw 7,413,000 gallons cross, oh, okay, I'm on it. Process for a daily average, 239,000. Two samples were sent to the Smith Laboratory in Hyde Park for a total chloroform. For a total chloroform slash E coli testing, 5.6 and 5.12 of this year, both samples were negative. There were no main breaks or interruptions of our service in the village.
In May.
In May.
While Robert's here from the engineers, we, one of our lifelong topics is, when Steve reads that, that 236,000 gallons a day pumped, and then we, with our new meters and anything, we're still not catching all the water on the revenue side, so we came up with an idea that might have been bandied about at a meeting here. Could we, from 2:00 AM to 4:00 AM, watch the tanks and see when theoretically, most people in Red Hook are asleep and not doing their laundry and different things, you know, can we see tank levels diminishing? I don't know if you want to hot hold up their little, it's a, we, any engineers in the audience can look at this, but nothing's jumping out from the graphic data, it's, I don't know.
I don't know how well your zoom camera is.
Yeah.
One of the things we do is, we continuously monitor the elevation of the tank, and this one in particular is the tank on Tower Street. And this is a chart for a week, you know, set for full seven days. And the pattern you see here, the substitute pattern, is the fill and the emptying, right? And then when it reaches the low level, the pumps turn on and fill it. So we control the fill, but the draw is based on water consumption. So that's what the theory that we're talking about, just used, you know, to estimate water leaks, you know, in a water system. We look at 2:00 to 4:00 AM where water usage should be next to nothing. You know, you would expect the tank, in a perfect world, the elevation of the tank to be steady for those two hours. But what we're seeing, it's, it's the slope line in terms of the drainage of the tank is consistent, whether it's, you know, in the middle of the day or, you know, early morning hours. So, you know, gives us some more food for thought, that there's still, still something that needs to be figured out or discovered to account for that.
Yeah, so what are you saying, is the pattern stays the same, whether it's 12 noon or 12 midnight, it's filling and draining at the same rate, which then, you could leave that chart with Steve, who's an engineer of some sort, right? It's a, but it's, it's mystifying you, you would think you would see something different than we're seeing, so.
And that firm that we hired, excuse me, in Phase 1, that went around and did a search?
Yeah.
So, what their, what their research was, they looked at the main lines, so not, not the service lines, but only the main lines.
Okay.
And when they went through, and there's a report that they generated from their findings, took them two days, go through the village, and they identified a couple hydrants that were, they had some minor leaks. But when they did that, they didn't find any, you know, gushers out there. We used them a couple times since then to locate line, you know, when we had a, you know, water puddle that we knew there was a water break, and they could pinpoint exactly where that was. But when they did just come, come out here and check, they couldn't find, you know, they didn't, you know, find anything for us. But there's, obviously, as we, as we found in some of these other breaks, through corrosion and whatnot, some of these are just instantaneous breaks, there are slow leaks that occur over a long period of time. And some of them may be on the water surfaces, which of course, we've seen some of those too, I think we passed them around.
I know this is money, but would it be a good idea to bring them back in and do a sampling?
What do you mean by sampling?
Well, they did the main lines, now we do a sampling of the feeders, and all four quadrants, and just do a sample, just randomly.
You know, larger water systems do, do this as a routine, you know, once a year, do a leak tech, you know, just got to move around the system, because things are always moving around on the ground. It's not a huge cost to, to have, you know, one day for their service, so it's something to consider. And there's, there's other companies besides the one we use, it's just a, I've had some pass, good success with them, that's why I recommend them.
Wouldn't it make any sense to do like a routine type of thing, like we're doing with the cash basis? With the ones up in the three sites?
I think that's what Robert's saying, yeah.
Just rotate it every three years?
Yeah, so that, you know, whether it's three or five-year period, you've hit the village, right? Make the area round.
That might be easier to budget.
Right.
The way you do it with the water services is, they come in, kind of like we just said with the water tank, you come in the middle of the night, and so they would go to the water services and put their leak, you know, their listening devices to it, you know, 2:00 in the morning.
What do you mean, the curb valve?
Yeah, the curb valve. So they get it, and the homeowner's not using water, because if they're using a lot of water during the day, you can't tell the difference whether it's a leak or water usage. So if you do it 2:00, 2:00 in the morning, the expectation is that there's, you know, they're not doing laundry at that time, or taking a shower. So if you hear a lot of water, then that would tell it's, it was suspected leak.
Now, do they do like a small percentage of the overall meters?
Well, we could, we can define it, I guess, depending on what budget you want to set, you know? If you want to do, hey, how much can we accomplish in a day, or, you know, an overnight thing? We can figure out what that is, you know, is that 50 houses, is that 100 houses, you know? We can, we can investigate that.
Steve, I have a variation of a thought on that. What if we turned off the pumps? Because what he's seeing is, tank drops, pump kicks on to maximum level, pumps go off, so you get that consistent pattern. What if you just at midnight, certain night of the week, or two nights back-to-back, don't let them refill? Would that tell you anything? Whereas, as she's dropping, I mean theoretically, if nobody's, I don't know how you get the bottom line, I guess, but if, if you don't refill it to the absolute last moment, you know, would that tell you something? Instead of just letting the normal pump come on?
Yeah, right, gets you a longer period to study, right?
Yeah, and then, and then could you compare it to 12 noon? Like say, I guess you want to compare, like say 12 midnight, 12 noon, leave pumps off, monitor so you don't run dry, and then see if there's a, the slopes should change, like theoretically, 12 noon, she should be a steeper slope versus at night, right?
Right.
But now, pump kicks back on, it brings you up, it breaks the study. What would that cost? That'd be men sitting, or would, can you do that from your computers remotely?
Yeah, we have that ability, right? So we could monitor it and, you know, look at it and just be a, you know, we have time to react if something happened, but.
To say to 12 to 2:00 PM and 12 midnight to 2:00 AM or something, so you don't have to stay up all night.
Right.
You see I'm getting that?
Yeah, no, it's a good idea.
We can plan that out and do something like that.
I think both of them together will give you a good picture.
Or do we have some big customer we don't know about somewhere? Anybody got a factory that's using our water?
Eight thousand gallons a day.
All right.
I also think it's worth noting that since we completed Phase 1, that they can actually monitor now remotely everything that's going, quote-unquote, everything that goes on. They can tell, you know? It's fairly quickly if there's problems.
Right. Besides, you know, alarms for pump failures, there's the levels of tank, the levels of chlorine, residual, chlorogens, so, it's good.
And I forget if at our last meeting, but we were successful in converting our block grant from wells 5 and 6 at the east end to drilling a new well at our wellhead, our main well field, so we got that all approved and-
Yeah, we're, we're looking to be, this time next month, to be advertising.
That, that's a huge thing for us, it's good. Anything else on the water world?
Yeah, actually, I don't know if it's been said before, but all work for Phase 1 has been completed.
Yeah, that's-
Yep.
Fences are up.
How many, how many customers have not converted to the new?
We probably know that more than him.
Next comes to the billing.
I think.
Five or six?
Yeah, five or six.
We're down to a small number.
And they're paying the fee.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Actually, on that note, remember we bought, after the project was done, the meter project was done, we bought 10 meters? Those 10 meters have been already installed, so we're actually looking to buy another 10.
That's a good thing, we talked about it at the meetings too, but with the new development, new houses, what he's getting at, we're, instead of having surplus, we're putting, actually installing them, which is good. Means there's construction, good things happening. Anything else? Do you want to head out, or you need to stick around, or you're-
You go over tickets, Ben.
No, I think you can go down. Thanks, Robert.
Good night.
Thank you, Robert. Mr. Deputy Mayor, you ready to go?
Yes, sir. I'll start with the village green committee, month report, the current balances, this is, as of May 30th, this is the end of the year, our spot was, need beautification, ending balance was $1,784.19. Shade tree contractual ending balance for fiscal year 2013-14 was $4,280 in our village green committee checking account. Final balance is $3,260.41, and there are no village green meetings held during the month of May. Village Highway Department, report for May, the village highway department is currently picking up lawn debris and brush on every first and third Mondays of the month. Residents are reminded to place lawn debris and brush curbside and please limit the size of the brush piles to six feet by six feet by six feet, with tree limbs and branches no larger than eight inches in diameter. And please do not include tree trucks and debris from tree maintenance performed by private contractors. No scrap metal was sold during the month of May. The total revenue generated for fiscal year 2013 is $4,566.28. Since inception of scrap metal recycling program in September of 2007, $16,456.17 has been generated. Proceeds from this program go toward purchasing tools and equipment for the village highway department. And residents and business owners interested in donating scrap metal can contact the highway department at 758-8600, or the clerk's office at 758-1081, and the highway department will assist by picking up scrap metal. Red Hook infrastructure and the intermunicipal task force, the Red Hook sewer project, a map locating test well sites and surface water bodies has been prepared by T.T. Mail, and property owner's permission and notifications are currently being requested and distributed. This is part of a, a well testing subsurface. We're monitoring the flow of the aquifer from the east to the west as it goes into the south hill. The New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation forwarded the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Engineering Grant Agreement on May 29th, and signed copy is forthcoming, right? We'll get that out soon. The village was awarded a New York State EFC Engineering Planning Grant, the $37,500 project, cost $30,000 in grants. $7,500 in-kind service obligations will be used for the water quality test and also the preparation of an engineer's report. The engineer's report, including water quality testing data and results, will be forwarded to the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation for scoring and placement on the intended use plan. The IUP determines priority ranking for drinking water and clean water, state revolving fund financing, for capital funding, considerations of water waste butter projects in New York State, who are current deadline is, I believe, in August 31st, so that's our goal for our next submission. I attended a meeting on May 7th at the Culinary Institute of America. The meeting was held to discuss the financial tools for environmental protection and infrastructure in the Hudson Valley. Also to discuss the recent policy, policy changes that would enable Hudson Valley communities to access better than market rate finance tools through the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. Representatives from Chinook Hudson, Marquette County Executive was there, Matt Driscoll's is the CEO of New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, along with Jim Levine, a bunch of people, Ron, ex-deputy commissioner of strategic planning, Fran Dunwell from the Hudson River Valley Estuary, Mike, representative of Mike Heinz, that was the county, Ulster County Executive attended, and it was a good meeting over there. So, Red Hook Water Projects, the Hocken Farm TND, represent a meeting held on May 7th to discuss possible water connections from the town and the village to supply some of the proposed developments south of the village. And that's ongoing discussion right now. Robert had talked on USDA and UFC Phase 1 and Phase 2 water projects. We did have a meeting on May 15th with USDA and our engineers and village representatives. Basically, what Robert said is Phase 1 is, is closed out, Contract 2, Nashville, excludes national metering, that was closed. Contract 1E with Wayland Electric, that's currently closed, and Contract 1G, we still have some paperwork to file, but Wells 2 and 8 have been permanently abandoned and filled in, and our security fence has been installed. Phase 2, requirements regarding public notification to move forward on Phase 2, it required completion of forms were discussed at the meeting. The village received the required documentation to complete Phase 2 from USDA on May 16th, and we discussed the, the rate scheduled last meeting, and it was published in the paper. 2013 Community Development Block Grant, as Ed had mentioned, Ann Saylor, who is the Economic Development, Community Development Administrator for the Dutchess County Department of Economic Development, notified the village on May 21st that the Community Development Block Grant Program has approved the requested amendment, the requested extension. The amendment includes a revised scope of work, including drilling a new well at the Firehouse Lane well site, instead of improving abandoned Wells 5 and 6 located at a former East Market Street brush lot. Task force signed, task force met on the 2nd, 9th, 20th, 3rd, and 30th at the Red Hook Red Hook Town Hall. Roll specification for the town and propose revisions to the definition and maximum quantity of rooms that can be located in the RD3 Unlimited Development Institutional Stark Landmarks District were discussed. Red Hook Town Economic Development Committee, both Ed and I are village liaisons, meeting was held on May 21st at the village building, and we discussed the update and status of the Red Hook Village Farmers Market, which is now, will be its third week coming up. And also in discussion right now in development is the Red Hook Community Events Calendar. The goals of the calendar include increasing event awareness and attendance, increasing event sales and profits, a one-stop calendar of events for tours, residents, organizations, businesses, and assist all level organizations so that all events are found in one place and reduce conflicts when pre-planning event dates. The calendar will be hosted on the Town of Red Hook's website. We're still in negotiation with that and still trying to figure out a vendor for that particular site. The Community Preservation Fund, Farm Land Protection Advisory Committee, which I'm a member of, there were no meetings held during the month of May. The Red Hook Town Zoning Review Committee, which I'm a member of, representing the village of Red Hook, no DRC meetings were held during the month of May. Also the Town of Red Hook, Village of the Red Hook, and two of the shared services committee. The Highway Shared Services Committee, there were no meetings held during the month of May. And for people who want information regarding this, the status of the study, again, this is a $79,000 grant that we received from Dutchess County to look at shared services for the three municipalities of the Town of Red Hook. The website is redhook-roundoutconsulting.com. You can see what we're working on there. Red Hook Together, both Ed and I are members of that. Meeting was held on May 15th at the Red Hook Village Building. We talked various representatives from Bar College Center engagement, Red Hook Laboratory, Red Hook Central School District, and the village of Red Hook presented upcoming events and schedules. And also we had a presentation by Phil Hartman, who's the owner of Two Boots Pizza, and we think owns about 14 Two Boots Restaurants around the country. This guy- Discussed assistance for not-for-profit organizations and fundraising events. A new committee currently stood on is called Libraries Transforming Communities, Public Innovators Cohort. I represent the village of Reddick. Reddick Library received a grant award from the American Library Association with sponsorship from the Villain Melinda Gates Foundation to attend a training workshop from May 20th to 22nd in Denver, Colorado. The Reddick team was one of 10 libraries in the United States to receive this award. The Reddick team members included Eric Freudinberger, who's the director of the library, Shelley Herrich, who's the library head of circulation, Jay McLaughlin, former New York State Parks Regional Director, Aaron Canaan, Associate Director of the Bard College Center for Civic Engagement. And myself attended a three-day seminar in Denver. This was all paid for by the grant. The Library Transforming Communities Grant is an American Library Association initiative that addresses the critical need within the library field by developing and distributing new tools, resources, and support for libraries to engage with their communities in new ways. Resulted in stronger roles for libraries to become more reflective of and connected to their communities and build stronger partnerships with legal civic agencies, not non-for-profits, funders, and corporations. The workshop was conducted by the Harwood Institute out of Bethesda, Maryland, that teaches and coaches people and organizations to solve pressing problems and change how communities work together. Other libraries that did attend this included the Columbus Public Library in Madison, Wisconsin, the Hartford Public Library, Hartford, Connecticut, the Knox County Public Library, Vincennes, Indiana, Los Angeles Public Library, Los Angeles, California, San Jose Public Library, Spokane County Library, Springfield City Library in Springfield, Massachusetts, Suffolk Public Library, Suffolk, Virginia, and Tuscaloosa, Alabama, Public Library. The Reddick Library will be conducting, as started already, conducting a series of community conversations with various Reddick Village civic, cultural, and interest groups over the next 18 months. And this is to determine what kind of community people want to live in and to listen to comments regarding what things need to happen to create a more engaged community. We're just starting out on this and quite excited about the work. And that's it.
Thank you.
Also on that library report, I think it's well noted that what you told me also, that Reddick was the smallest.
Yeah, we were the smallest, we had a representative population of 1,900. The biggest was Los Angeles at 8.3 million. So we, the next biggest was 5,000, that was Springfield, Mass. So it was, it was very interesting, and we were singled out as being the most diverse group of people there. And also very outspoken, but mostly we were set the library and staff there. We had a real good mix of our institutional civic and cultural organizations represented. And I think we had a lot to the conversation, a very intense program for three days. And met a lot of good people and hopefully put a good light on Reddick and the rest of the country. So we'll give you updates as we go.
I had a funny part of the story on the Tuesday, I think it was, of the publication. They called, I guess the mayor reached out, and they called me anyway, they wanted me to be on air. I don't know how many people heard that there, was it the whole group?
No, just you, just one person.
But some good people listening.
There was, one of the exercises we had to do was called an ASKS seminar. We'll be doing this, we'll be conducting the same thing in the village here, but we had to call people on the phone from Denver. Two people, each person had to call, and next the, another person talked to you, right?
I think it was the director, somebody from Chicago Public Library was interviewing me.
Prime Madison, so it was just basically questions on your community, what you, what your idea, what the community is, how it can be better, and things like that. So these are some of the, just training exercises that we went through. But it was to train us and to talk to people on the phone, strangers, basically, or people we didn't know of or have a relationship with, and try to build relationships with the community.
But this is the good part of it. I heard through grapevine from people that came back from our group that whoever this interviewer was, wow, he wants to move to Reddick, it sounds like a great place. So he was like, alright, that's good, I'll sell Reddick anyway.
Does that...
Anyway, looks like we've gotten through the committee reports and department reports. We would now move to our regular business section. We've had some people waiting patiently in the room here. I'll say a little bit, then you can talk, Sarah. The Town of Reddick has a formal conservation advisory committee, and they've been able to work up an intern program, somebody that will work with the Town of Reddick and offer some time to the village of Reddick. So Sarah, do you feel, do you want to just talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, sure. So my name is Sarah Imboden, and I'm on the Town of Reddick CAC Conservation Advisory Council. And basically, we just think and talk and discuss about environmental concerns in the town, and that includes the village. But specifically, we have an intern this summer who's going to be working with us on two projects. One of them is disaster preparedness with the town committee, talking about what that has to do with climate change and how the town will be adapting to climate change threats, if there are any, how to study that. And the other, the other project he's working on is a Green Business Challenge, which is really what has to do with the village at this point. So I'm going to just introduce the intern really quick, that way you guys kind of have a face to quote the name, and then we'll talk a little bit more about what he's doing.
Hi, my name is Gouda Ahmed, and I'm a history and US major. And I'm a rising senior and an international student at Bard College. And I'm working with Lori Hassett on the Green Business Challenge and Vincent Colletio on the Disaster Relief Program.
I didn't hear your name.
Gouda Ahmed.
That's fine.
G-O-U-L-E-D.
A-H-M-E-D.
I'm sorry?
A-H-M-E-D.
That's my last name.
So those two projects are...
Yeah, so the first one, the Green Business Challenge is part of, so there's a statewide thing called Climate Smart Communities, which some of you have heard about. Basically, communities, towns, villages sign a pledge that has 10 elements that basically just commits that town or village to pursuing climate smart policies and ideas and projects. So there's really no actual commitment in it, other than when you become a climate smart community, you're basically saying, we agree with these ideas and we're open to pursuing them, is essentially what it is. So Reddick, Town of Reddick is one, Village of Tively is one, Village of Reddick is not, yet. So that's something else I want to talk to you about. But basically, we, Town of Reddick had already put together a proposal of some kind for a Green Business Challenge, but, which would essentially be some kind of program that would get businesses in the whole town committing to these kinds of ideas. Maybe it would be some kind of recycling initiative. If it's a restaurant or some other place with a lot of food stuff, maybe composting. Some kind of thing that would maybe, it might have competitive elements, or it might, you know, something like, look at us, we got four out of the five stars for the Green Business Challenge. Or maybe it would not be competitive, you know, it's, it's still being formed. And so that's why we wanted the village to know about it right now, as we're just starting to try to design it, because obviously, most of the businesses in Reddick, especially the restaurants, which we think are some of the ones that can be more applicable to this challenge, are here. So Gouda, right now, is basically doing like a best practices survey and coming up with what he and the CAC think would be a, maybe a good model for Reddick. Now, what we'd like to do is workshop that with maybe a village board member or two, however many you might want to send, maybe a couple of business owners, maybe many business owners, maybe a chamber of commerce person, a town board member, you know, try to get a few people in the room and just kind of help with, you know, designing it. And then maybe that would be a couple of meetings, maybe it'd be one, maybe it'd be many. But that's, that's what his work is mainly for the summer, is trying to help us design it and come to a point during the summer where we have something to really talk about, what it would look like. What would the branding for this look like? What would all the elements of it be, besides your cycling and composting, things like changing out all your light bulbs for more efficient light bulbs? Even pursuing solar, if that's an option, or other renewable resources, things like that, energy audits. You know, with the idea that most of it would be cost-effective, efficiency, you know, kind of stuff, maybe no cost. Does that make sense?
Okay. Where does Gouda actually work? Would he be in the town office, or town streets?
I'm actually currently working, half of my time is spent at Bard College in the Office of Sustainability, and the other half I've been working in Town Hall. I start on Wednesdays, so I'm starting to acquaint myself with the Town of Reddick kind of what I have to do.
Is it a full-time summer job, or how many hours a week?
We haven't like carved that out yet, but I'm working between June and August 1st.
Yeah, just August 1st, so he's just kind of trying to help us get it off the ground into at least a form where we can start really planning it out and discussing it. And there's no set timetable, it may take a long time to get to a point where we all feel like this is something that's ready to roll out and have businesses sign on to. But basically, I just wanted to introduce him early in the process so that he'll probably have questions for you, for somebody at the village. Maybe there's a specific point person you guys have that would be good for him to specifically direct questions to, or maybe he should just direct them to Lori and have her reach out, what's...
Well, Janet's the trustee for materials management, so she's the one not here tonight, but... Or me, yeah, once you call to me and I can push it where it seems most appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So the only other thing is just with the Climate Smart Communities thing, it's basically just a resolution that the village passes that then magically makes you a Climate Smart Community. So I know the town would really like, the CAC would really like it, the village would consider becoming a Climate Smart Community with us. Some of the benefits are that you are eligible for certain grant type things, or that you're also just, you look better because you are, you can kind of list that as one of your many things. And, you know, when we do things like the disaster preparedness study that we're trying to do, if we get a grant to do something like that, then it's easy for us to tack on, like, well, we'll also incorporate the village and the village of Tively in that, which we would potentially do anyway as a town, but because you're a Climate Smart Community as well, then you get the points for that with the Climate Smart Community Program with the state, so, anyway.
Well, we're not resisting it, we just think we're a climate genius community.
That's great.
As a matter of fact, Patrick's going to be getting a police car Prius soon.
So the thing is that, so there's 10, there's 10 pledge elements, right?
Uh-oh.
That have to do with all different kinds of things, like, let's see, number two is, set goals and inventory your emissions, which has already kind of been done by the town, so probably, there's probably a lot of overlap there, but. Encourage renewable, number four, encourage renewable energy for local government operations. So I think you've already done some of that, like, you know, any solar type stuff, any like light bulb changes, you know, all the stuff I kind of mentioned already. There's lots of stuff on here you're already doing, you get points for that already, retroactively, you know, and then it just kind of encourages you to keep going. Number 10 is my favorite, and that's commit to an evolving process. I think that's pretty open-ended, you know, just commit to an evolving conversation. And I just think if you could commit to that with the town by becoming one, that it just, it's really, it's really nothing that we're not already doing, it just puts a name on it, so. If you would like me to come sometime with the actual resolution and explain it further to you, or give it to you, or email it, whatever's the best, just let me know.
I think if you come and explain it to us, and...
You could also email.
Or email?
Well, I'd rather discuss it personally.
How, I talk?
Email's overwhelming. Thank you.
I would like to get a copy.
Yeah, well, sure, we can do, of course, so digest before, and then... Great, thank you.
Let's see. Set, next line of Janet's, Set Water Informational Meeting. Last month, we moved ahead as a board formally analyzing Phase 2 of the USDA-funded upgrade. But we would like to put more out, we had a PowerPoint we presented for those that were here, and we had our exhibit of rocks corroded over time with leaking service laterals. I think the people in the back might have seen that last month too. But the Observer ran a great story about that meeting in general, and we just want to be sure everybody's on board. Part of the project involves resurfacing the roads in the village when we're done. We want to make sure there's no misconceptions or anything about that. The best we could do is, I think, do that PowerPoint again and put some broad-based invitation out there to folks. You know, and it's not a public hearing, it's just more informational. What we'd probably like to do is put something in a newspaper. Could be a general circulation, I don't know who reads, the Observer gets mailed to everybody, so it's more likely you're going to read that than even the Kingston Freeman, and they are. But I guess technically, we'd have to put it in both just to cover it.
Yes.
And then we post something here. I was thinking, I think July 14th is our next meeting. Do you have a calendar right there for you?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. We could make it sort of a social, for those that were here for the PowerPoint, I'll just repeat that and re-invite folks who wanted to show up and get a better explanation about it. Does that work for you guys? Are you going to be around July 14th? You going to be around July 14th? Are you around?
I am.
Okay. Well, we just, we'll do, the resolution will invite the public to an informational on July 14th, 7:00 PM. We'll open a meeting with that, PowerPoints and exhibits, and do sort of a roundtable just to discuss what we're really doing with this thing. Sound good? Is there a second on that? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Let's see, two more things and we'll go to public comment. One was, in the public hearing, we talked about, first, local law number three, which is redefining, modernizing, that's Section 216B 2B of the Code of the Village of Reddick. Cindy had read the motion, had read the text of local law and the legislative intent. I don't know, I think I would just ask that this be entered as an exhibit, we all heard it. The one thing Steve recommended, which we'll change, is where the acronym DEIS was written into it, we will put the full wording, draft environmental impact statement, and then in parentheses, DEIS. And up above, do the same treatment with the full word, State Environmental Quality Review Act, or stated out, we'll put in parentheses after that, SEER, so folks can be linked up that way. So anyways, it's a local law to amend the timelines for site plan review and approval. And it's, as Cindy read it, with those modifications...
Did that text come from Rich?
This is from Rodenhausen and Shaw.
Okay, so I'll just send her in and ask her though.
No, we'll just do a change. So anyway, I think those are the only changes we thought of as we put through public hearing. What we'll do is, I would entertain a motion that the village board adopt local law number three as put forth.
So moved.
Signed it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Then, this would be then local law number four, the winter parking. If we all recall, we're just adding sections A and B and leaving section C, the payment responsibility section, as it sits in our code. We didn't make any changes there, we just acknowledged that C exists already, and we're not deleting it or replacing it, we're just letting that stand with the new A and B. This is, we call it local law number four of 2014. Is there a motion to adopt that local law as worded?
Did, couldn't we want to take names at public hearing?
We did at the public hearing. As far as that comment on the...
Right.
Well, once you move in a second, we can talk about that. Pardon?
What's the little law number in this one?
Four.
Four. Is there a second on it, so we can go to discussion? Did you say second? Discussion, Steve, what were you saying there?
Well, we had public input on the, to more explain the... Well, we had public input on the, to more explain the, when we do the business district.
I know, I think the spirit was good. I don't disagree with it, but I don't know that it has to be enacted in the law. The sign goes up. Maybe Patrick has some input out there. The, when we do the four-corner cleaning, I don't know if you're in, but we're trying to change the local law for Route 9199 to allow some later parking on those highways. But one of the members of the audience brought up, when we do the snow clearing, we stick those, no parking, temporary police order or something that gets stuck in the snowbanks. Trying to see if that should be interacted. I don't know that that rests, its authority rests in this section. I think it's referencing just some police authority.
I've never put those signs up.
Yeah.
I haven't, I didn't know it'd get while winters.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, why don't you, could you explain a little more what you're thinking?
Well, it was, I think, you know, George offered it as more of an explanation of what we're, what we do in the business district, to differentiate the business district from the village areas.
But are you suggesting a certain sentence or wording, or?
No.
I get the sense, but I'm not sure what we do.
I think it would help more define the business, the business district, or the town, the state highways from the village highways.
Because this is for when we do the major removal of the four corners for snow.
Yes.
But it's not our routine maintenance, a snow removal. Because that, that's what we're talking about in this one specifically, right? Just when there's a snowstorm. But, you know, we could have four or five snowstorm before we empty.
So explain what, are you thinking something needs to be changed or added, or? I'm not objecting to anything, it's just I don't know exactly what we're thinking of.
Two different subjects here.
Pardon?
Aren't you talking about two different things here?
I kind of think so.
I think, yes, we're talking about two different things, but do they have, do they, does it need to be in here about the business district?
Steve, the law that we're looking at, the title, this is our current bill's law. It says seasonal all-night parking. So I don't know if that's the same thing as...
Is it covered anywhere in the, in there about when we do the...
And that's optional, because it depends on even on the budgets that we have, how many times we do it per year, or if we do it at all. There's always the crap shoot when we try to do a budget, but...
Maybe we could ask the audience member, do you have a, did you have a particular idea, thought, like what?
Well, I think you have to just make a distinction between village streets and the state street, let's say. You can put a timeframe, like say 11 o'clock. And I don't know if you can even put it technically on the state street, but as far as the cleanup stuff goes, you know, you're not going by an 11 o'clock time, you're going whatever time you're going to do it. So by putting in there that, in an instance where you're going to be cleaning and you post it the day before, then any cars there at that point can get towed, even though it's on a state's highway, not on the village street. It's a notification to the public, so they can't come back later and say, well, yeah, I didn't know, it's in the law, and you're identifying it as not just a village street, it's a state street and it's been posted. And this is an incident when this stone's got to be cleared, I'm not talking about any other type of thing. It's just a specific area, so it kind of covers yourself on that. You have to check with the state.
That's also an issue, too, that it's really hard to pinpoint down, because over the years, we've, couple years previous, we actually shrank the area that we were doing as a budgetary because of the limited money that we have. This year, we actually expanded it because we had a better coordinated team doing the work. So even, even the definition of the boundaries is flexible from year to year.
Well, you can go about what you post. That's why if you left it open, if you're going to post a one-block, two-block stretch, four, six-block, that's going to be whatever you decide to post. It's still going to be on the state highway opposed to the village street. Village street, no parking at night, and that's it.
I think I get what you mean. I wasn't quite sure when we were talking. I also think it might warrant a paragraph D, which we could craft later, like where it would say in instances where there's the bulk four-corner cleanup when temporary, no park, but I think we'd have to craft that wording.
Oh, yeah.
It'd be, but my recommendation that we go with what we got now, and then we could figure out over the summer what D would say, and then come back and propose a D. Because right now, I don't, I couldn't craft a sitting right here, you know, because there's too many variables, and there might be some authority somewhere else in the code that doesn't come to my mind, but I don't know every word in that code, so. Does that work for you?
Yeah, it works fine.
So there's some discussion, any other discussion?
Yeah, I just want about the, the last sentence, last part of the last sentence. It's the last part, last part of the sentence of B.
B?
At the direction of the police department of the village of Red Hook or any responding police agency. So that part is put in, in response to when the village's police are...
Right. If our staff is not on duty and DOT needs to remove a vehicle, meaning state DOT, they would...
That would be through the sheriff or the state trooper.
Yeah, so they would call whoever they felt needed to be called, and then they'd, preferably, probably call our highway foreman, and he would call somebody. But the thing is that the PD, whether it's our village PD, some PD has to get a log entry. So when the person's missing their car, you know, did my car get stolen, or did it, what happened to it, you know, so just trying to pick that up there. So I think, Patrick, is there a code number or a log or something?
Yeah, if vehicle gets towed by a police agency, it gets put into database, so if any agency gets the call, put the license plate in, it'll show up, that it was towed by whatever township and who, what agency, I mean, what tow company towed it. It's not a stolen vehicle, because that does happen. It happened a few times, people would come in, report a stolen vehicle, that was out on the village street, and at four o'clock in the morning, someone towed it other than the agency. Now, a police agency didn't okay it. Someone came in, gave the okay, the company towed it, and no one knew where it was. So we'd normally find it after two or three hours, but that's why if anybody tow's it beside the police agency, they must be notified, so we can put it in the system, because it's time wasted.
Yeah. So that's why the word, under the direction of a police, of the police department, somebody asked, came to speed the highway guy. Okay, sounds like discussion's over. We have a motion, all in favor of adopting local law four? Aye. Thanks. Now, let's see. Well, we go to public comment, we put something off there. Let's go to this newcomer gentleman here. Can you say, you name him where you live, sir?
I'm Dick Fritz, I live on Elizabeth Street. I've got an interest in the wet area behind the library.
Okay.
Got a couple of questions. Number one, is there a master plan, or is there any non-local planning that would encompass the condition and the use of it? Number two, would you consider as a board doing something with it to enhance it, make it attractive to the village, such as get rid of the algae, just by putting a couple of pumps in there and aerating it? And I would like to have an answer to that, if not tonight, some other time.
Well, we can give you some response on the aerating and, I talked about the master plan in a grander sense, but we put forth an aerating option to the adjoining land orders multiple years ago. See, the issue is it's privately owned land.
I know, it's not yours.
Yeah, six or eight, X number of owners, but, and there's been propositions and offers made. Is there vegetation type thing that might help clean the water, and is there aeration?
There are things you can do, you put carp in there and now eat it.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't think you really want to do that.
Right, yeah.
But I'm saying, it should be along the line of considering that as an asset to the village. I know there's six families or six whatever that own it. Nobody's doing anything with it, and it's just sitting there now.
There's a couple of options, too. We just recently amended our zoning law. Within that zoning law, there are three diagrams that were included within that. They're called those good sketch plans, and you can access our website.
I don't have the internet, and I did talk to your zoning guy, he sent me up here.
There, I'll give you a hard copy. There are hard copies available, I believe, somewhere in the zoning office, they should have hard copies within our zoning book, because they're just recently amended. But it shows three of those great best plans.
I asked that, and I didn't get that answer.
Who did you ask, Stan?
Mr. Hawkins.
They're all available. We can get your name and send them to you.
I could, I'd agree with one, if you want to sit there and look at it. It's, it shows like a little book back and a few...
There is, there is, it's not a part of the comprehensive plan, it's, it's something that, because we agreed, it could be used as an asset. Our problem is access to it. There's no village access to that.
How about the library? That's village property.
It is not a village property.
It's not?
No.
It's a village library.
It's not a village property. And we already went through that with...
Would it be possible to maybe poll and see if there's V F W, or that the library would allow it to happen?
That would be, that's up to the property owners, so they can come forward and, you know, suggest that to us. There's other things we suggest to the property owners. The town has implemented a program called the Community Preservation Fund, and I sit on that committee, and I helped draft the project plan. That's also on the website, there are so hard copies available at the town, but it specifically lists the properties, all the properties surrounding that pond back there as being eligible to receive funding for that. It's, the Community Preservation Fund takes...
And I don't mean to interrupt, but it's not being drained, it's not pond, it's really a stream.
And it's not a stream. What it is, is called the upglacial inclusion. So it's the lowest part of the village, it's not spring fed, it's all...
It runs off the street.
Well, the street and everything else around it, so it is the lowest point in the village. So it starts at the height of what on Frehley Street, everything drains down from there, from the height on Elizabeth Street, it drains down from there, everything drains into that.
Well, but would you consider, or get some plan that we can work to, to try to get this thing attractive?
A couple of years back, I met with Texas County Forest Water Conservation District, they came down to look at the pond, or the surface body of water that's currently there, they called it a wetland, and it's a regressing wetland, and it's regressing in a bad way because it's not being properly maintained or cleaned.
Who's supposed to maintain it?
It's the property owners.
Are we aware of it? I'm a property owner.
You should be aware of it.
Who's going to tell me?
It's part of your property, my property.
Are you the budding owner?
Yeah. Well, who's going to tell me that that is a responsibility of me?
Well, I don't know.
I don't tell you. My ignorance level is high, I've just moved back to Red Hook, 35 years before that.
It's privately owned, and we can't tell private property owners, I mean, there's provisions in New York State law.
Could you suggest it?
I think we have, with the other property owners around that, that area. That's been suggested for years now. And we tried our best to bring it, we talked to, again, bringing aerators in, that wasn't a solution. There was a solution to provide, you know, legal access to it, limited access to it from a one single point, that would take an easement or the donation of the property that contained the wetland to the village, to the C E C, Community Preservation Fund, that's one asset. We talked to land conservation, land conservatories such as Sina Hudson, to see if they were to develop, divide the development rights or the rights of that pond and donate it. It's really has to be initiated by the property owners. We, we suggested these to all the property owners around there many times.
And again, I say my ignorance level is high, but I understand the outlet pipe is plugged. Now, let's assume it wasn't plugged, it would drain, it would go to the salt hill eventually. Then it wouldn't be a pond anymore. Then my land would be dry, and the land alongside, adjacent would be dry. Who therefore is responsible for draining it? Unplugging the pipe?
That's something that's been discussed.
Yeah, I know it has, but I have never heard an answer to it.
Well, we've answered it a number of times, the, I don't know how much you know, but I'd be willing to talk a little bit. Thinking of the years, the plug, the pipe system was built in 1889. We found, Mr. Queen comes off, and it was essentially an early version of a drainage sewer district that was enabled by state law way back in the days, and the private adjoining owners formed this entity. And if one looks at the law, they actually have the ability to assess each other for maintenance and so forth. Somehow, it gets built through lands of others and so forth down to the southwest, and then it functions, we get act of all information up until like 1976 or some point, people remember, people would open a sluice gate and drain it, and then it just stops working. And the question...
I think you just ice skated on that pond 50 years ago.
Our highway foreman, too, he grew up around there somewhere. My suggestion is if you wanted to come in, we've got a monster file on this thing, and we would love to find a solution, but the big hangup has always been it's privately owned land, and it's something where we're...
I would be open to getting enough information to see to satisfy me, or perhaps help somebody figure out how to do this. But it seems to me the key is, if the pipe wasn't plugged, there wouldn't have the pond there, then all of us would have dry land.
Right now, that's considered an Army Corps of Engineers wetland, so it's not a D E C, which means it does not drain into the Hudson River.
No, but the salt hill does.
Yes, but right now, it's currently designated as an Army Corps wetland, and not a D E C regulated wetland, which means it does not go into the salt hill watershed, or which especially drains the Hudson River.
But why is that pertinent to this?
What you just brought up, that drains to the salt hill, currently as it stands, it is not a Department of Environmental Conservation wetland, it is an Army Corps wetland, United States Army Corps wetland.
But again, if it was unplugged, where would it drain? It would drain to the salt hill.
Then it would probably change the designation, but it currently, the current status of that is, it doesn't mean it is an Army Corps of Engineers wetland.
And is anyone pursuing an approach with that?
With the Army Corps?
Yeah.
I talked to the Army Corps and also talked to the D E C about that. The Army Corps is less restrictive, basically what they're looking, there's very, very little restrictions on that wetland with the Army Corps. But if the D E C controlled the wetland, there would be setback regulations based on, you know, hundred-foot buffers around, around the wetland. Their only really big restriction right now is placed by the Department of Health on that, and that's for regard to subtics.
There is to one.
Subtics. So there is a hundred-foot buffer that's in there. So you have something that's in there now grandfathered, that's one thing, but if you were to build a new subtic, you would have to subscribe to the Department of Health, Texas County Department of Health regulations.
But that's not unusual today.
That is not, but that's really the only restriction on that property.
Okay, all right, I see your point. Lori, look, you've got my questions, you've answered me to a degree, but I would be open to any suggestions that you might have in relation to my questions, because it seems to me that that, if that was drained properly and maintained, the people who own that land would have their land, they're paying tax on it, we're all paying tax on it.
And is there responsibility at this point to maintain that?
Pardon?
It's the property owner's responsibility at this point to maintain that land?
To, but the land is underwater.
Well, if you take a walk around there, you'll see stuff.
Well, I have.
If you wanted to come in, I could talk to you. We've put a lot of thought and a lot of work into this, and...
I appreciate some of that.
We would like to try to get something to happen there, and we've...
Where's your office?
Here in the building.
And we do have the drives.
I'll call and make an appointment.
Yeah, be good.
That can't be in the next week or two, but after that.
Sure. Thanks.
Can I look at this?
Yeah. I opened it.
Excuse me. Before Mr. Fritz leaves?
Pardon?
I just have, before he leaves, I just have a comment. Pat Schultz found some interesting documentation in a court case from the 30s and 40s, I believe it is. She's made some copies, and she's giving it to Dave to look at. It shows that the village has some responsibility, they accepted it way back when, for the piping and everything. So as soon as we can get Dave to look at it, I think we would like to have another meeting, and Mr. Fritz might be interested in joining, because I live across the street on Fisk Street, but Pat Schultz is one of the main owners of the property. And we would like to meet with you again, because we think information that's in that court case, it was the Supreme Court, I believe, does show a lot of the village's involvement in that property.
Someone would think so, I mean...
Is it a court case specific to the village of Red Hook, you mean, like a...
To the village of Red Hook, and a... To the village of Red Hook, and it delineates the village's responsibility on regard to the piping. There was a question at one time about the, how deep that pipe was and how water could go uphill. The pipe that it refers to was like fifteen feet under the roadway. So there's a lot of information about the piping and who did it, who paid for it and everything else, and the village had a big responsibility in that piping.
I think the current plan, the eighteen eighty-nine plan that, that was shown. It showed that at St. Christopher's, the pipe being at fifteen feet below, and then there was a DOT pipe that came in from Catch Basins on. South Broadway there at Garden Street, I believe. That was a nine feet level, and when we dug down with the DOT, with our village guys and the DOT was there as well. Then we went down to thirteen, fourteen feet there trying to find. That eighteen eighty-nine pipe, we found the DOT pipe at that current rate, but the two were at different elevations. So it'd be, if she had additional information, that would certainly be.
Yeah.
Because I wasn't even born in nineteen thirty.
Right, Pat is getting it all copied and everything, it's like a hundred and thirty pages of information.
Do you have, do you know the site of the case, do you know the name of it? Our lawyers could look it up.
No.
Just in case we have it here.
But Pat will have a copy of it and you'll, we can give you a copy and you can see what it's all about.
Should we have a copy?
Well, you, for your reference.
If you get us the name of it, we can get our lawyer to do it too. Yeah. Okay, thank you. You can sit and read that if you want, and come back another day and read it too, so.
No, what are you showing me here, I don't, I don't know, this is just a picture of the village.
Yeah, there's a little comma shaped dock in a pier at the edge of a page somewhere there. It's like a master plan concept for the town.
I'd have to look at the site, I mean, I can't accept what I see.
When you come in, I'll, I'll explain it to you if you.
I'll give you your office a call in a couple of weeks, I'm making a point.
Sure.
Thanks, thank you.
Comment back there.
I could just get more information on like, like the count of the incidents, the rest and the B and T between town and village, because.
Oh, yeah.
Didn't get that today.
Incident number two twenty-six.
Right.
Village juror one thirty-two. County juror eighty-nine. Village two eighty-five. U T T zero one sixty-six. Village juror one oh five. County juror sixty-one. Rest for twenty-five. Village juror fifteen. County juror ten.
Okay.
And then Donnie, we cut you off before, but.
Yeah, and would you consider if you, if you're gonna take the streets up and that, you're gonna put the new border means and then drop it in maybe a pipe for the, let's say sewer in the future? Being that you're gonna have, you know?
No. He said no, he can't answer yet, I mean, his first.
I mean, you're gonna have the streets dug out, I mean, you know?
Yeah, the first phase two is important to know is what we call the southwest quadrant of the village, so it's. In the choir streets, and then it becomes an engineering question. Had, I think, that's probably what Brent has had, is you have to, you have to know the system you're building before you lay pipes, you know?
Well, I'm also looking at, with, this is a, a water grant, so the money is earmarked specifically for a purpose and is based on an engineering report which was submitted. That had all three phases listed. So they're, this is USDA funded, so they look at the scope of work and what was provided, so if we add additional pipes or work that's not within the, the scope of the work, that we were funded for, that's the biggest problem. Right there, adding pipes.
Yeah, back in eighty-five, when we redid all the four corners here and everything else. They offered the opportunity to put the pipes in on the corner and that, all they had to do was just pay for the pipe.
Yeah, I don't know who offered that, that was private, right, it wasn't the state doing that?
State. It was a state contract.
Yeah, and what we're trying to figure out too is that, at that point in time, you know, where would you pitch the pipe? I mean, where would the treatment plan be and how would you pitch it?
Right, that's going down towards the limited area.
Well, this, the treatment plan we're talking about now is over right of common, so.
Where does that end up being to the Massimo Smol, right?
It enters into tributary number seven, which goes into the salt hill.
But I get the sense of your question, it's just, we, we have thought about that, it's.
It's a shame, you know, you're gonna have it all dug up.
Yeah.
And it is a shame.
But I think there's something with the trenching and, like he said, for sure, the funding is for water project, but. How close do you put a sewer line and what pitch where's it headed, you know, you have to have the project engineers.
I mean, we tried this when we had the first sewer project funded. And we tried to get. Central Hudson to give us the size of a conduit that we could bury the lines in. So they came back with, well, we don't know how it's gonna be bundled, because we're talking cable, electric and telephone. All in a con, we didn't, they said they wouldn't give us that information. And we were trying to say things, since we haven't dug up, we're putting directional drilling, at this point, we weren't digging up a general business district, but would it make sense if we're drilling? To put a, a pipe in there for future use and. We didn't get cooperation from that utility either. So a sewer, what we're talking about is this quadrant back here, the, what is it, the southwest quadrant?
For the water.
Yeah, for the water, the sewer. You know, what we've been talking about the last. Eight years now, it's just a general business district.
Yeah, that's a pressure, pressure system?
We're looking at cost effectiveness.
Yeah.
And we're also looking at survival of the village, so while we were looking at the pressurized system at the point. We didn't want to dig up the sidewalks. Because all that restoration cost, and then the gravity system will at least triple the cost of the system. And so some of the comments were, well, we can't afford that system anyway, so if you want to triple the cost. We're looking at other options right now, but. We'll get a value for the money. You know, just to get this system. So the sewer, the entire village, we do have a plan to do that. And so also on the books. But that's the way up, that is the future.
Anything else?
Per diem. You were saying, what did he tell you?
You're not even saying what per diem is?
No, not that. Just I, what I wanna know is, you know, what cases does he work on, he works just on village cases, is he working on town cases?
Nope.
Who's picking up the?
No, but we have, you know, we have multiple outstanding warrants through the village juror court. You know, he could work on, well, yeah, there might be. Months that go by that we don't, that I don't use them, a lot of investigations, I, you know, I'm handling and things like that. The workload gets heavy, you know, we have a lot of outstanding warrants, a lot of burglaries come up. You know, big cases, grand large needs, we had. Three to seven thousand dollars stolen from one of our auctioneers, you know, that takes a lot of time, there's people that might seal up things, live in different areas, kind of different agencies, a lot of work to go involved there. So for the. Really, the, the lowest pay scale, you get a guy per diem with. Twenty-five, thirty years of experience for pennies to. Handle some of those cases if needed. Months go by sometimes where you just, I don't need it. If there's a big case, like right now, I got ten warrants just from the last village court. Outstanding warrants, ten people, I have on my board. Twenty plus warrants that are in the system. These people get picked up, another agency might call us, they might say, hey, we have this guy for. If only a soul you have him down in Wobbers, and, you know, we'll send a guy to pick him up. It takes time to coordinate that, find these people, because they all owe money. And have to come to be prosecuted on their offenses in this court. You know, when those things, sometimes, once you're cleaned up, everything's good, then you know, we don't, we don't need it. But for the small cost of it. For, for that kind of experience is, is a smart move. Things like that, if we got them.
Where's this guy come from?
He, he's retired city beacon detective sergeant.
So he lives on Beacon?
No, he lives north of that, I'm not gonna disclose.
He gets paid four to four?
Nope.
He drives up here for nothing?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Only gets paid when he's here. I'm not gonna disclose his address, but, you know, because like you said, we deal with. You know, drug cases, things like that, things come up, so I'm not gonna put, I'm not gonna give a guy's address, but he only gets paid when he's here.
Before you guys do some just work.
Yeah, I know, you're sorry, yeah, he only gets paid when he's here. Everybody, that's everybody. No one, you know, you only get paid when you clock in, clock in, clock out like anybody else.
I think Patrick, excuse the word per diem, but I think you mean as needed.
As needed, yeah.
But, like, you know, all our part-time guys, they only get paid. Once they punch in, it's. It's not really per diem, it's like as Patrick needs somebody. So they're on our roster, but they're not, he's not getting a salary or a weekly check from us unless he's punched in on a case.
Yeah, see, you're picking up more and more stuff here now, that's what I'm saying, like.
We're a busy village.
Yeah, with the sheriff's department and that, you got the best of everything. You know what I mean? Or don't you? That's why I'm saying, let's set up a seminar and let's have them come up.
And that, I've been through these conversations multiple times, I mean, you know, they're, the sheriff's office does have some good detectives, so do we, you know, we're very good at what we do, and, you know, when you get into the bigger agencies, you might get a detective who's good, but he has ten cases on his, on his plate. Throughout the county, and someone in the village which might have a burglary. If you had a burglary, you would want direct attention, someone who stole your property, you would want it. If you have multiple cases. You're, you're, you're getting a little bit of, everybody's getting, well, it's the only fair way to do it, you have to work.
You're saying they don't have time?
I'm not saying that, I'm saying when we do it, you get direct attention on it.
I can't believe that.
You, you don't know because you've never had it, I can assure you what we do, I'm not gonna sit here in a public meeting and tell you we don't, I know what we do and we're very good at it. I'm the one in charge of it, I watched these cases, I'm the one directly involved in burglaries, I'm telling you that, these are facts that happen. They are very good what they do, but when you cover an entire county, you're covering all over the place. So I'm not saying they don't have time, but when an agency has like us, who we are directly involved here, you get, you get my direct attention, because I'm here. That's the difference.
I think they do a pretty good job because.
I'm not saying they don't.
They call.
They call.
Well, Don, maybe, let's keep the focus on the word. When you brought it up last month, I live in the Minnesota, as I mentioned, we had some very detailed discussions with the sheriff's department about three years ago. And then, and then, like I said, the last meeting, it still stands, we're always looking at options in all departments, like you hear highway shared services, you know, we. But what we found, and I think what you might be misconstruing is. The sheriff's department doesn't necessarily come for free, you know, if, if we're asking for special services or special attention, they charge for that, it's not this blanket coverage and. You know, right now, the village residents have incredible protection for two shifts a day. If you trade it off for money reasons, you know, you're diminishing services, you know, something our board thinks about across all departments, but. Right now, it's, we, we keep that in mind, but you do have to analyze, it's, it's not a free service you're getting, it's like typically, for instance, they pay for certain sheriff protection, it's not, they just don't ride through there for nothing. And then on top of that, was an anecdotal thing, was this weekend, my phone went off at, I don't know, ten to, ten to five one morning, was our alarm company. Saying they got some alarms in our building. And they're like, ah, it's pretty early this morning, usually it can happen like when the staff are coming on duty for regular time, if they don't get their password in quick enough or something. And. And that went off, it wasn't dispatched to the agency you're talking about specifically, but I think it was like forty minutes, and my option is to come up and roam around the building and look around, but. When it's an odd time like that, I'm not gonna come in, I'm not a police officer, so I let, let the responding agency respond. And after a while, they still weren't here, and I called some of our staff, R P D, and we ironed out what it was, but it had to be about forty minutes, and nobody had even hit the building yet, you know, it's. And I'm not criticizing anybody, it's just there's a factor out there that. All departments, all agencies are spread thin and, you know, fortunately, we didn't have a problem here, but let's say somebody has a serious problem in the building, it'd be forty minutes before something happened and then, so, but, but to go back, we do take your suggestions and we. Across the board.
Well, the only thing like I said, Ed, is like, you know, I'd just like them to put it across to people, the seminar and that, and tell us what they can do and that, they did theirs two and a half years ago. Let's, let's see, let's just hear what they gotta say.
No, I don't know what they got to say, I've been here and done that, so. It's, we have all numbers and.
Well.
Yeah, right now, it's.
Well, the residents didn't hear what had to say.
Well, one would presume that the mix, you know, would be, some percentage would shake out one way and some another. The important thing is, I think what you have to keep thinking in your head is, it's not for free, you know, you just don't shut down a department and have free coverage. Yeah, it's like, and it's, or, you know, if you restrict hours, you're, and you cover with somebody else, they're not gonna drive around with the same coverage for free, you know, and so, so anyway, but. Yes.
Why couldn't the village look at saying, we're no longer going to do the town, we're strictly going to be a village police department? We don't spend six hundred thousand dollars a year of taxpayers' money. And just take care of the village and let the state police and the sheriff's department take care of the town.
Well, two things.
Taxes keep going up and.
Well, it's not because of that, town pays it.
I'll answer that. Two things, it's not six hundred thousand, so let's be clear about that, it's, if you take all the components, like we told Don a month or so ago, it's about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's salary, cars, pensions, healthcare, fuel, it's, it's not just the payroll, that's the package deal. And what we do is, the town, we don't patrol them for free, they pay us and we give. We know it costs us an hour, one policeman, that includes the building heat, the car and the fuel. We take that number and then, what the town pays us, we divide. Their checkaus by the cost per hour, and that's the hours they get. We're not freely giving them service, and this was the issue three years ago, the department was headed a little bit into giving more services than the town was paying for, and we had to tell them, we can't do that, we can't fund you. So those are two important things, did you have a second part, you know, or you said it's town, but I don't know if you had something else in there, but so it's, it's not six hundred and it's, it's reimbursed, it's paid for, it's not. Not, and I think, the other thing too is, you know, the town, our people or our officers know the town, you know, they, they.
Well, you can't really say that, Ed, everybody, most of these guys is part-timers on you from this area.
You've got six or eight sharps that live in the village.
Pardon me?
You've got six or eight sharps that actually live in the village.
I couldn't hear you, you said six.
You have six or eight sharps, definitely said, live in the village.
Well, I don't know about the village, but.
I'm talking the village.
I mean, do you guys go to the county meetings and, and talk about the amount of money spent on take-home cars? I mean, do you guys go to the county meetings and talk about the amount of money spent in take-home cars? I mean, you're right. I mean, and I'm friends with all these guys, but you can have the conversation both ways. And, you know, and the thing is, as you know, is, you know, I, listen, I hear what you're saying. I listen to all your comments you make. But you guys really don't know what we actually do for the residents that come in. Some people come in that I don't disclose their information because it's private. The service we provide for the cost we provide that to the residents, all the time, we are here after beck and call, right away. You know, it's tough to put a price on some of those, some of those incidents and, you know, that gets it before. And it's no, it's nothing that gets it. You might have a delay only because there's a big area to cover. Been here a long time. I've seen it every different way. And I am directly involved in every incident that goes on here. So I know the relationship that we have and what we provide to the residents, you know, and it's, you know, it's, it's, I know how hard we work and, you know, I get what you're saying, but you really don't know how much, what we actually do. You get the numbers, but.
Well, Don, and I guess it was actually George in that question. I ride my bike a lot and I see the same thing. I see more guys, you know, take-home cars out, more in the town. I see a couple on Linden and up on Route Nine North, I think. And any creatively business-thinking person would say, well, is there some option there? But just because the cars are, the officer's off duty, he's not like, there's no dispatch system where, okay, you know, there's a suspicious something going on at the back of the Red Hook Inn, you know, somebody's trying to break in.
They're not twenty-four hours here.
I know, but, but just because the guy's got his car parked, well, doesn't mean he's gonna hop in.
Well, that came about so they know the area, they know the people. I don't know these people. You know, they pull over, some people in town who've been here for forty, fifty years have names on their buildings and they have no idea where they are.
Which might be a good thing too. I mean, it's.
You can't say that they're local, they know everybody. They don't. And they change so often, it seems.
They know the area they patrol. They might not know everybody like I know everybody, because I've been here all my life or you guys have been all your life. But they know the area they patrol because that's a requirement to come off field train and it has to be done with names. So I know that's right for me because I go through every street with them. So I know, you know, they know the area they patrol.
Like we said earlier.
They have relationships, you know?
Yeah, we'll try to wrap it up with, yeah, this board, we hear what you say. We look at options and, you know, we work with police management. You know, it's, it's an ongoing discussion, but it's, right now, when you look at budgets and things, it's, it sounds like big numbers. But I think there's been a, I think the old Red Hook PD was twenty-four, twenty-four-hour shift. I think it predates me, but maybe Patrick.
No, they cut off.
Was there ever an all-night shift?
There was a short time they were issuing warrants.
There was, there was, there was never a full twenty-four hours all the time. There was random rotating shifts, A-line from midnight to eight, because I worked them. But it wasn't, it wasn't every day. It was random. Kind of like we do with the towns. Not every day. It's random patrols.
I think to the police department's credit, we're looking at community policing ideas like limited schools, bike rodeo. Yeah, they, they do stuff. I think that bike rodeo, a lot of those guys off to your gear time. They were, they didn't, they weren't charging us on the clock. They just came up and did it.
Same thing with the egg hunt air laws, guys off to the time.
Yeah, and then, but it's, it's an ongoing issue and, you know, we creatively look at it, you know, we're, we're. Anything else? We kept Patrick late. Sorry about that. Any general business from the board that we didn't hit? Let me just look at my agenda here fast. We did that, we did that, we did that. Pardon? I would say we need to do a motion to pay bills after audit. Is there such a motion? Second. On favor? Aye. And then I would like to ask Mr. Kavalec if he thinks we're ready to adjourn.
I think we're ready. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening.
A second.
On favor? Good night, everybody.